And now called order this August 5th Friendswood City Council Meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Father Thomas from Mary Queen Church. Please stand. After the invocation, we'll do the pledges.
Let us pray. Generous and loving God, we thank you. Thank you for this beautiful city of Friendswood in which we are proud to live. We thank you for its history and for all generations of men and women who created its life and its beauty through the years past. Show us how to be worthy successors of those who lived well in the past times so that we may hand on our heritage to those who will come after us. Thank you for the lovely countryside around us. May we do nothing to spoil your wonderful handiwork. Help us to make our city a beautiful place to live in. Show us how to fill it with kind deeds and loving words. Thank you for all the facilities it offers for schools, shops, police station, fire departments, library, and all. We pray for those who serve as our elected officials, Mayor Mike Foreman and the members of the city council. May they be thoughtful and wise in their decisions and open in their approach to changing conditions. Lord, we pray for all the employees of this city. May their skills and experience be respected by all and their dealings with the public be marked by helpfulness, courtesy, and tact. Lord, source of all our strength, support each member of our city's council in this meeting. Grant them the courage to be open to each other and not to be fearful of the new and different. Grant them your guidance that they may lay aside all private and personal interests, prejudices, and impartial affections and work together for justice, peace, safety, and happiness, unity, love, and charity towards one another. We ask that the work of this meeting be a vessel for them to serve one another and you. Grant them humor and humility so that not only this meeting, but all our lives may be a meeting place for your kingdom. We ask this to our Lord Jesus Christ, your son who lives and reigns with you, and the Holy Spirit now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, Father Thomas. Item four, council comments and reports. I'd just like to mention our Parks and Recreation staff. They're just about all the way through their summer camps. My two granddaughters had the opportunity to attend a week of, two weeks of camp, I guess. Had a great time, so I want to say thank you to the great folks we have here in Parks and Recreation for setting up such a great summer camp program. Councilmember Hanks.
I'd like to remind everybody that school is about to start, so we'll see an increase in traffic and walkers as the students go back to school. And I hope everyone drives slowly and will be supportive of our, of our students and our staff so they can have a great, safe, and happy school year this year.
Councilmember Branson.
So, two things real quick. One, Brent, I'm going to talk about us. Brent and I, I want to thank Katina wherever she, oh, she's not here. There you are. So, Friendswood Community Prayer Breakfast asked Brent and I to say a few words, kind of like a mini State of the City Report. Mayor, we did not steal your show, I promise. But we want to thank Katina in particular for helping us with that presentation, so I want to say thank you. And it was a lot of fun to do that together. We had a good time. And at the time when the prayer breakfast got started, there were only seven churches in Friendswood. And we have well over thirty here in town now. But talking about history and given what we just went through, I had a client who's moving out of their home and doing some cleaning out. This was the Friendswood Reporter News back in July of 1979. Can anybody, does anybody remember what happened back in July of 1979? Brent, you weren't even born yet. So Claudette, and if y'all want, I'll leave this up front, but pictures, Alvin, Friendswood, Pearland. There was not a single, not that this is something we're proud of, but there was not a single neighborhood in Friendswood that did not flood back in 1979. And Claudette was just a tropical storm. It wasn't even hurricane. So anyway, that's my history lesson for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Ellisor.
Two quick things. I got to attend the Friendswood Library liaison to the board. I was really impressed and glad to hear of all the programs and things that they have to offer for communities. So I've encouraged y'all to check out the Friendswood Library activities that they have available for us and for our kids. The second thing, and Tricia's aware of this, this is the eighty-fifth anniversary of public schools in Friendswood. And they had their convocation this morning, and I was honored to get to lead the pledges there because back in 1939, my dad was the first principal, shop teacher, and coach for the first public school here in Friendswood. So they had a neat little video about that, and it was pretty cool.
Awesome.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that the Dickinson Bio-Watershed Steering Committee has a meeting tomorrow morning at the League City Civic Center at 400 West Walker Street in League City, Texas. That will begin at about nine AM. And I also wanted to mention that I liaison with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and they have hit the ground running. They have preliminary plats and plans signed with the lakes of West Ranch. Section five preliminary plat was signed, the Muldoon Parkway Phase Four preliminary plat was signed, Magnolia Bayou Phase Three preliminary plat was signed, Westland Ranch Winfield Parkway Phase One preliminary plat was signed, and the West Ranch, Westland Ranch Winfield Parkway Phase Two preliminary was signed. And they tackled a study that they were doing this last time on the Stedman West Legacy Development. And they also went over the update on the city of Friendswood Utility Relocation over at Clear Creek. That was at our last meeting. Just wanted to mention that they're getting things going, and they recently have a new hire, Samantha Heritos, who used to work with the city of Friendswood. She's got a lot of background with the Corps of Engineers. She's going to be a big complement to them over there at the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. I also wanted to mention, because this was updated also at the same meeting, if you go on the Harris County Flood Control District's website and you go under projects, you scroll down to the Friendswood Stormwater Detention Basin, and you'll see three alternatives. Two of them are really viable. There are these two. You can go and, I didn't give Mo enough heads up, or he'd have it pulled up for you, so you could see them here. Right now, they have identified a wetlands area, and that wetlands area, if we can't mitigate for it, we are not going to be able to, to dig at that particular location, and that will have to be left without being excavated in any way. So alternative one, if we are able to excavate that, would lead us to about eight hundred and ninety-four acre feet of stormwater storage. And alternative two, if we do have to leave the wetlands and some other things that have been identified in the area, will be about seven hundred and ten acre feet of stormwater storage. We had originally thought we may be able to get anywhere from eleven hundred to seventeen hundred acre feet in this location. But water tables, the way they are, the depths are being evaluated, and all the engineering is coming back. This is what we're really looking at as far as alternative one and two. Alternative three would be a wet bottom, and it's way too close to Ellington and the Air Force Base and all that that's going on over there with the flight control and space now. So, alternative three, if you go on there and look at it, you're really not going to be able to, you know, to go with that with the wet bottom. But do take a chance, take a look at it, you'll see what's going on with the stormwater, stormwater basin, Friendswood Stormwater Drainage Basin. We will, if this is the way it's going to be, probably have savings because we had allotted about thirty-two million dollars for this project. And with these alternatives, we'll be coming in around twenty million dollars. So there might be some savings there that we can use elsewhere along the Clear Creek watershed. So that's my, my take on it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matranga.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have three quick items, all hurricane-related, coming from different parts of that process and living through it. I had the privilege of having to, having access to and was able to be part of the Emergency Operations Center in Friendswood before, during, and after the hurricane. And I want to just let everybody know that's here or watches this, the outstanding job that our city staff did in managing that Emergency Operations Center, from taking calls to making plans for the next events that are coming, for the next things that we had to be ready for in the city, keeping the utilities online, even when you didn't hear about sanitary lift stations running out of power. They made sure you didn't hear about it. So there was a lot of things going on behind the scenes, but the professionalism and the dedication of the staff was just outstanding. So thanks to all those people that were in the EOC and all those people in the city staff that supported the EOC. Again, I was very impressed. The, the second thing is debris pickup. I'm going to just say it, that I think all of us have been working diligently to have it picked up, and we want it all done as quickly as we can. I know I do. And I had the, also the privilege, I went on a ride-along on one of the debris trucks. So I spent last Saturday morning, four hours. They, they roll out at six AM, and it's still dark. But they rolled out, I spent four hours with them, and I learned a lot. And I think the team that's working in Friendswood, the seven trucks that are working, are working really hard. It's just, I mean, until that pile is removed from your house, I think everybody continues to worry about it. I know I did, and for the record, mine just got picked up yesterday, and I was thankful for it to be gone. And I know we all will be when it's behind us. But I will tell you, the drop-off at the Hill Sand Company is very efficient. And what's really slowing them down is, you know, having to move, pick up a pile from each house, move, you know, move ninety feet, do it again, and move ninety feet and do it again. So that just takes time, and, but I know that they really are working hard. And then the last thing related is communication. I've heard from a lot of people, concerns in, about communication. Didn't see this, it's on the website, couldn't get to the website because they didn't have power. I know, I haven't talked to everybody on city council, we're precluded from doing that, but I feel certain that everybody's been involved, working with staff to how do we continue to always improve our communications during emergency events. On a more formal basis, I'm just going to say that councilmember Aaron Word and myself are going to sit down with city staff. We've scheduled a meeting, kind of on a more formal basis to look at what went well? What, what did we do that, that really worked well, and what are things we can improve upon for the next event? Trying to, again, capture those things while it's still fresh in our mind. Anyway, those are the three things I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Councilmember Aaron Word.
I just want to, I know it seems like it's been a long time ago, but I want to thank the, all the July Fourth Committee for everything they did and putting on, you know, it's always our best show ever each year, and then the next year is going to be the best. But I just want to thank them. Also, there's going to be several openings on that committee. So if anybody wants to join that committee, fill out an application online. We can definitely use some volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you all. Item five, public comment. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with rules of decorum. Michael Ross. The only one.
Only one, all right. Well, I'm here today because at the end of the day, I've had a lot of people reach out. I'm one of my board members in my community association, and they really want to know what's going on. First of all, at the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, then they further asked me to look into what's going on down at city council. So I'm kind of like community representative, much like you yourselves. One of the things they want me to look into, they know my history as a developer, so they understand, I understand development. I've been doing development for about twenty-four years in the state of Texas. I've done developments in the Houston metro area. I've done developments in San Antonio, Austin. I have very intimate knowledge of the various financing vehicles. First, I want to give a shout out to manager Mo, Khabir, excuse me. He has one of the finest staffs in the state of Texas. They, without a doubt, know their business. They're polite. They answer questions. They do not deflect. They do not, in any way, shape, or form, show any animosity that somebody's come up and asked them questions. So I would just like to start with that, is I've been meaning to come up for like nine months because I've had some interaction with the staff on several different levels, and they have been excellent and awesome. So I think that stems from leadership. In, as much as what my community wants to know is, how are we involved in TURS in the city of Friendswood? How is that tax deferral going to benefit them? And I started looking into it because I was basically focusing on what was going on with the drainage, and I'm very, very, very concerned about how drainage works in Friendswood. And I had the property that is in TURS One under contract at one point in time, probably about 2017, 18, if I remember correctly. And I know exactly what it took to develop that property. So when I look at that, a TURS is a reasonable vehicle for developing that property. It was truly blighted with the amount of floodplain floodway on that property. It is a great commercial property for the city of Friendswood to develop. I think what you're doing there made a lot of sense. TURS Two, on the other hand, I have a lot of problems with. It is mostly a residential community. It's large lot. It would develop with or without a TURS reimbursement. It is, in my opinion, kind of a handout that the city's giving to the developer, and I don't see that there is a payback on that investment that I've seen in any of the paperwork that I've been looking through. And I'm really concerned that the city is deferring those tax dollars that they might get otherwise. Nobody really wanted that to be developed in the community. Thanks for your time. I'll be happy to talk to any of y'all afterwards.
Thank you, sir. Item six, municipal budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Six A is to receive and discuss a presentation regarding the city of Friendswood proposed budget for 2024, 2025. Rhonda Velazquez, our finance director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to, to present an overview of our fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. As required by city charter, the budget was delivered to each of you prior to the August 1st deadline, and a copy of the budget was left, I think, in your boxes in city secretary's office. And there's also a copy on the website available. I'd like to also mention that changes can be made to the proposed budget prior to adoption, so we do have that option to make changes. So let's get started. This is information we've shared with you a couple of times already in the last couple of months, but I wanted to remind every one of the key drivers in this year's budget. Like every other organization, the city is experiencing expenditure growth with revenues struggling to keep pace. Deferred infrastructure maintenance and equipment purchases are resulting in higher costs for repairs and replacements. Personnel costs increase each year to recruit and retain the city's most valuable asset, our employees. And this year, at the direction of council, we're onboarding the EMS. Please keep these factors in mind as we move through the slides and... I'm sorry. Please keep these factors in mind as we move through tonight's presentation of the proposed budget, and we, city staff, believe is needed to maintain or enhance the services our citizens expect. The proposed budget includes total revenues of a hundred and eight point two million. This is all funds. This just, this isn't just the water and sewer and the general fund. This is all of the funds. Forty percent of the total revenues represent taxes. That's property taxes, sales tax, and franchise taxes. About twenty-two percent is derived from charges for services, which are related to utility billing, parks and rec fees. And this is where the million dollars is budgeted this year for EMS billings. About twenty-one percent of the use of fund balance or retained earnings is mostly bond proceeds for capital improvement projects. And then you have intergovernmental revenues represent about twelve percent, which include federal grants as well as inter-local agreements, including the SRO agreement with FISD. The remaining five percent represents building permits, court fines, interest, internal lease payments, and miscellaneous receipts, which includes administrative fees for garbage billings, tower rental fees, and donations. Total expenditures of the proposed budget are estimated at a hundred and eight point two million as well. We're required to present a balanced budget. Of this amount, thirty-seven percent are capital improvements, which primarily include bond and grant fund-related projects. Nineteen percent of the total budget is public safety expenditures, which includes police, emergency services, including emergency management, emergency medical services, fire inspections, as well as the contract for fire with FEFD. Fourteen percent is related to public works, water and sewer operations, and contracted services for purchased water, water purification, and wastewater treatment, as well as streets and drainage. About eleven percent is budgeted here for principal and interest payments on previously issued general obligation and water and sewer revenue bonds. General government expenditures make up about nine percent and include mayor and council, city secretary's office, city manager's office, city attorney, finance, human resources, HR, IT, communications, and municipal court. The remaining ten percent includes community development, engineering, parks and recreation, library, and the vehicle replacement fund. Here, we compare the FY25 proposed budget to the current year adopted budget, as well as the FY23 actual expenditures. And here you can see the increase in personnel and benefits. That's primarily related to the onboarding of the EMS, as well as the budget, the increase of about four percent for merit and salary adjustments related to the compensation study that's in progress. You'll also notice that there's an increase in that other category. I know it looks small, but that increase is related to, in FY25, we have about eight point two million is due to the city of Houston for the cash call for the southeast transmission line project. So here, we have two point five million budgeted to be, to be paid out of the water and sewer operating fund. And I think y'all have seen that on the monthly report that we've been planning for that.
And that's a correction from a prior comment or question I had received from you guys. That other category is for that payment to the city of Houston, that increase in the far right side.
Okay. All right. Well, let's narrow our focus to just the general fund. So the total revenue of the general fund is projected to be forty-one point eight million for 2025. That's up about four point three million from the FY24 adopted budget. Again, taxes in the general fund make up about the largest, make up the largest source of revenue, about seventy-nine percent, and that's property taxes, sales tax, and franchise taxes. The other twenty-one percent is interfund transfers from the Water and Sewer Fund reimbursing the general fund for its share of the administrative cost. Charges for services includes parks and rec fees, and again, that million dollars is budgeted here for EMS this year. And then you have building permits, fines generated from misdemeanor violations, interest earnings. And then the other includes cell phone tower rental income and then administrative fees related to garbage billings. And then we have purchasing card rebased budgeted there, as well as donations. Okay. The proposed budget was developed using a tax rate of fifty-one point forty-two cents, which is about point seven one cents less than originally projected, and about one point four cents more than the current tax rate. We received estimated certified taxable values from both appraisal districts, GCAD and HCAD, and the Galveston County Tax Office certified the no new revenue rate at forty-nine point fifty-one cents and the voter approval rate with the unused increment provision to be fifty-seven point eighteen cents. The estimated taxable value is five point nine billion, which is up four hundred and eighty-seven million, and this includes new constructions, new construction includes exemptions, as well as the sixty-five C's, ceilings, the free ceilings. And also note that the free ceilings are up about eighteen percent this year. So projected new construction value is eighty-two point five million for this tax year. That's down twenty-five million from last year, and then the property value...
I'm sorry. Is that both Galveston County and Harris County?
Yes, sir.
I got, I got one more question. On the twenty-five million down, is that on the new construction? Does anything have to do with the Allbritton Building not coming on that was projected?
No, sir. That has to do with the fact that last year, our new construction, what was completed was about a hundred and seventeen or there, about a million. When the Allbritton's completed, obviously, its full value will be added to the tax rolls, but what's been completed thus far has been added to the tax rolls. So there, the value has gone up from last year with what they put on the ground.
And then the property values under protest are about four hundred and twenty-four million, and this is about sixty-nine more, million more than last year at certification. The tax rate does include five point nine million to make the interest and principal payments on the debt service. And that's about a hundred and forty-nine thousand less than last year, those payments. This slide, this slide shows the relationship between the city's property tax rate and the property tax revenue over the last thirteen years, as well as the projections for tax year twenty-four. In 2011, the city adopted a tax rate of fifty-nine point oh-two cents, yielding a levy of just below fourteen million. For the 2024 tax year, a rate of almost eight cents less is being proposed. That will generate the needed levy of twenty-seven point eight million for both operations and debt. Now let's look at just the M and O portion of the tax rate. The no new revenue rate for M and O is thirty-seven point eight-five cents, and the proposed M and O tax rate is forty point four-one cents. This is a difference of approximately two and a half pennies. And then the items in between represent, the green bar and the blue bar represent the difference. Other revenue sources used to offset property taxes are shown in orange. The EMS onboarding adds one point three cents to the tax rate. The merit and anticipated salary adjustments adds one point six cents to the tax rate. And then the deferred maintenance of five hundred thousand is, adds almost a penny. And then you'll have all the other forces at work shown grouped together, which add point zero one three three cents to the tax rate. And on the next slide, you'll see the forces of work broken out, listed for you. And I'm not going to read each of these. There's one point five million dollars worth of forces at work included in the budget.
Could you explain forces at work for everybody here?
So forces at work are items that are really out of staff's control. They're either items that are based on what's happening in the economy, as well as items that y'all have, council has directed us to add, like the EMS.
Like insurance costs that are going up. We have no control on what insurance costs are.
We have no control.
Correct. So a number of those items are, obviously, everything we do has to be bid and competitively procured. Those items come in at the cost that they come in at, and so we try to effectively negotiate a smaller increase. But at the end of the day, we're, we're subject to what the, the dollars are on the bids. Some of these items, for instance, the SRO contract with FISD is costing us ninety-one, nearly ninety-two thousand extra this year. But that was a prior agreement that this council made back in the spring, I believe it was April timeframe. The column on the far right is a cost accounting for each of those forces at works and prior contract decisions by this, this body. And the accumulation of all of that's about one point five million. Thank you.
The next slide, this is, these are the decision packages that are funded, and there's only one of these that doesn't have an outside revenue source that's being funded through the tax rate and the other revenue sources in the general fund, and the salary, that's the salary adjustments and the merit at four percent.
I will say on that item, we don't have... I will say on that item, we don't have the salary compensation study complete just yet. The consultant's still working on that, but whatever the results are, we'll adjust accordingly. So, for instance, if it comes in less than what we anticipate with the 4%, then we will, that money will flow into the fund balance. If, if it's not, if it comes in higher and we can't afford it, then we'll have to work out a plan to tackle it over the next few years.
And you're doing that compensation study because?
So we've lost a number of employees over the last couple of years anywhere, for instance, Councilmember Grefon mentioned Samantha this evening. She left our employee to make $40,000 more a year with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. And that wasn't even one of the, the larger losses. We lost our Public Works Director to make 80,000 more a year working for another agency. Lost our IT Director making 50,000 more working for another agency. So we're, we're losing key employees to other agencies in the public sector for quite a bit more money. And so this body approved a contract for an outside consultant to look at our salaries compared to other public agencies.
Well, we've commissioned an outside consultant to do this compensation study, but we're 100% sure, because we've already put in the budget raises for the compensation. We're 100% sure that that study's going to come back and say that we're not compensating our people.
So it's a combination of 2.75, which we typically put in our budget for merit pool?
Right.
And then the remaining 1.25 is for what our consultant anticipated for adjustments in salaries.
So we, we haven't seen the compensation study yet.
Correct.
We haven't voted on the compensation study, but yet we've included those dollars into the budget as if we already know that it's going up.
At the, at the suggestion of the consultant that we hired yesterday.
Thank you.
Okay. This list, this list represents the needs identified by city departments, but we're not funded with the resources available. So these are our unfunded decision packages. The tax rate equivalent on each of these items is available upon request, but all of them together is about seven and a half cents on the tax rate. So these are unfunded. So the proposed expenditures of the general fund are 41.8 million. This chart shows department, each department's portion of the expenditure budget. 50% of the general fund's expenditure budget is public safety, which includes police and General government expenditures represent about 19% of the total expenditure budget. Parks and Rec, about 14%, and Public Works is 6%, which is streets and drainage. The remaining 11% is community, our community development, engineering, library, and then def- deferred maintenance expenses. So let's shift our focus now to the Water and Sewer Operating Fund. The proposed revenue budget for the Water and Sewer Fund is estimated at 22.1 million. 21 million of that budget are, is utility fees for water and sewer, and then the remaining 1.2 million is made up of administrative fees, cell water meters, and interest earnings. The estimated expenses for the Water and Sewer Fund are estimated at 23.7 million, and this chart shows the breakdown by department of those expenditures. And just note here that the Water and Sewer Bond Construction expenses are not included here. They're included in bond construction funds, so they're not part of the operating fund for the Water and Sewer. The expenses are inclusive of 3.1 million in forces at work, with the largest item being that cash call to the City of Houston for the southeast transmission line project. On the next slide, we show the forces at work that are being funded out of the Water and Sewer Fund. And then on the next slide are the decision packages that are funded. And then our, this is our path to the tax rate and the budget adoption. The proposed budget was delivered last Wednesday on July 31st. This is our first work session tonight, and we have another work session scheduled on August 14th. That's next Wednesday at the library. And then if the, we have a public hearing and the proposed, on the budget, and that proposed date is August 26th, that's a Monday. And then we have the, the budget scheduled to be adopted either at that meeting or on the 9th. And then the anticipated public, public hearing on the tax rate is scheduled for September 9th at that council meeting, as well as the tax rate adoption. And as always, any input, recommendations, any of that is welcome.
Thanks, Rhonda. I want to just commend you, as always, this budget team, the city staff, Katina, everybody. You guys do a fantastic job. You come in, and you're very good at this, because you start out in June telling us it's going to be over 52 cents, and then you come in tonight and you say it's less than 50, it's 51 point something. And, you know, I'm just so excited that we get to, I was getting kind of used to 52 cents because I know things are going up and everything is getting more expensive. And so everything's going up 5%, yet our, our budget is not going up, our tax rate is not going up 5%. So I don't know how y'all are squeezing it out of the rock, but you're doing it, Rod. Excellent job.
Thank you, Mayor. And as we get certified values, we'll further refine the tax rate.
Yes, understand.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So, on the insurance, do you use in-house to go out to try to find good deals to make sure you're getting the best deal on windstorm? Or do you have a consultant that shops insurance for you?
We have a consultant that shops insurance for us, and this year, we had anticipated a 5% increase, which was about $104,000, and it came in at 92,000. $92,000 increase, but still less than what we had projected.
I just wanted to make sure it was outside.
Yes, ma'am.
And then a penny raise is about what? It's about a little less than 500,000, about 470? What's a penny raise?
It's a little over 500,000.
540,000. Little over 500, okay. And the 4% for the salaries, that's the maximum amount you're budgeting.
So it's.
Whatever the study comes back at, it will cap at 4% if we pass this budget.
So, and let me back up a step. Annually, this council approves as part of the budget 2.75% for merit pool. And what that 2.75% represents is 2.75% of our personnel salaries. It doesn't mean an employee will get 2.75, it doesn't mean an employee will get anything. If the employee only meets the bare minimum requirements for the job, they don't get a pay raise. If they exceed the expectations for the job, they can make anywhere from 2.75 to 5%, but on average, the cost of all of that's about 2.75% of our salaries. This year, we're setting aside 4%, and it's not going to be 4% for merit. We are anticipating adjustments to the salaries based upon that compensation study that was approved by council a few months back. If the cost of making those salary adjustments are in excess of what we're setting aside with this 880,000 in general fund, then we're going to have to come back to this council and develop a plan on how long it's going to take us to tackle that. Because y'all approved the budget, you're setting the tax rate now, we don't have the opportunity to go get additional revenue in December. I mean, there's no way, no way around it. So it will have to be a future council year decision to make up that, that shortfall. I do anticipate some positions will be valued more because that's what the market has, and some positions may be right where they need to be, or maybe we're already ahead of the curve. We don't know that until the study's completed. But again, as a reminder, what, what, the catalyst for this study was the, the loss of about seven employees. It wasn't just 5 or 6,000. We're talking 20 up to 80,000 difference over what they were making here.
It was to public entities.
Public entities.
Correct.
Yeah, let, let me just mention, personnel is about 70% of our budget now. And in our budget for 20, that's now ending in 2024, we'll start 2024, 2025. We had a reorganization, and I was all for it. I thought it was a great plan, and I, I'm just applauding you for the way that you realigned administrative staff and everything. But in this year's 24 budget, we were able to find funds in the general funds to compensate for the new heads. We've got new deputy directors, we've got assistant city managers. We were able to fund that and those extra salaries, correct?
It was funded by the use of one-time use of fund, fund balance, and so that's, it wasn't coming out of the tax rate.
Okay. And we have a compensation study that now we're accounting for in the budget so that we can competitively compete in the public market for our employees, and we're putting that in the budget. And I, I don't want to be like, oh, man, he's the bad guy or anything, because to tell you the truth, the 51 cents is right in there in line with what I was thinking too. But I was just wondering, on this year alone, if we did away with the merit side of it, we're going to be giving everybody raises. And then if there was something in the supplemental that's not funded, that's deferred maintenance or anything like that that's really important to us, maybe we could put that 600,000 to work under, under a situation where we're deferring maintenance or something that we would really like to do. We're going to compensate everybody more based on the compensation study. It's just one time, let's just take, take that merit. Let's put it towards something. I'm staying with the 51 cents. When we had our five-year workshop, I went to start to tell everybody, you know, I always start out, and then, and then I was interrupted, Robert, everybody knows you like the no-new net revenue amount. Actually, I like the no-new net revenue amount. Take out the new development and then reduce the no-new net revenue amount, and then go to your supplemental and add back what you have to add back to come up with the right tax rate. It comes in about perfect. And the only other place that I can see that, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't really hurt anybody too bad, simply because everybody is going to be compensated differently after this compensation study, and we've already realigned our administration and compensated them. If there's something in the deferred package that we might want to try to fund for another 600 or 650,000, I'd like to see us do that. I'm not going to vote against this because of it, because I think you came up with a great number, and this, this budget's awesome. And so that, that's my only two cents. Our, our personnel now costs are 70% of our budget. We have the best personnel. We've heard people come up, and I know we have the best personnel, and I don't want to lose anybody. I want to compensate them accordingly. But I think we're doing that. And we did get hit with Social Security and Medicare. We got hit with TMRs, retirement, health and dental insurance, life insurance, disability insurance, working comp insurance. All those are part of every employee's package, and that's an add-on too, and it's a benefit that they have here working for Friendswood, and Friendswood's a great place to work. But that's my two cents on the, on the salary side of it.
What I would say is we have to remember that, yeah, we're lumping that 2.75 and the 1.25 into a 4% total. But the 2.75, in my mind, merit means you're paying somebody for doing a good job. We want people to work in Friendswood and want to do a good job and earn that merit increase. Not everybody gets that. That's not across the board, 2.75. Like you said, some people might get 4% merit because they did such a fantastic job. And yes, we need to factor in the 1.25 because we know that we're going to get numbers back in that study and have to have the money available to raise some salaries around, around the city. It may be police officers, I don't know, but we'll find out when we get the study back. But I think we shouldn't confuse apples and oranges there and just say, you know, throw out the merit because we're already, we already got the 1.25% to come for.
We're, we're compensating them, but we could use that funds for deferred maintenance or something else that's very important.
Well, hey, there's 4 million dollars' worth of unfunded items on there that we could use the money for, but we're saying, hey, we need to take care of our, our employees first, I think, and, and we do have a fantastic staff, and we want to keep them.
I don't disagree, and I, I don't want to let anyone think that our staff, that I think our staff is not just excellent. I'm just saying we are going through a compensation escalation already, and that's, and that's why I brought that up.
Point of clarification, it may or may not be an escalation for everybody. The whole idea is to go back and relook at every position. Some positions may be.
It's just merit I'm talking about. It's just merit I'm talking about.
I think it's important that, that we have that to incentivize and to reward those who put forth the extra effort personally. That's where I stand.
Well, Robert, it wouldn't be a budget cycle if you didn't come in with some item to help us, you know, try to sharpen our pencils, so we appreciate that.
Well, I'm glad you said that because I do have another item. On page 86, the 2023 general obligation bond fund, we have 30 million dollars that we had issued and that we've been earning income on, and that income has been generating income, and we made an initial payment for the Friendswood Stormwater Detention Basin. You can see the 8 million dollars that is going out of there.
Yes, sir.
And then we are pulling out for this budget year for Whitcomb in-line and offline detention, 14,609,259.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to make sure I'm all for Whitcomb in-line detention and terracing and using the state funds that we get from the state of Texas with 10 million dollars there. I just want to make sure, because we've had documentation, and I was fully prepared to talk about TERS 1 and TERS 2 this evening, but I don't want any of these general obligation bond fund dollars that were elected by the people to go into TERS 1 as detention funds.
So they're not going into TERS 1. You may recall, back when Samantha was here and we did the modeling and we worked with Harris County Flood Control District, that in order to do any terracing or any shelving of Clear Creek, we had to have offline detention to get some conveyance credits so that we can shelve and improve the creek. A component of that was providing detention on the Whitcomb property itself so that we can do the, the shelving on the Whitcomb property. So 5 million of that 2023 drainage bond proceeds are going towards digging a detention pond. The developers doing it as part of their project on our behalf, oversizing their pond so that we can get some credit for that shelving down Clear Creek. Separate from that, we got funds through the state of Texas, through the Texas Water Development Board as part of the 2023 legislative session. They set aside 10 million dollars to, to complement the remainder of our bond dollars to go do the improvements along Clear Creek through the Whitcomb property known as the Clear Creek Detention and Shelving Project. That's the 14 million that you're referring to on that page 86.
That's what I wanted identified. That's my big question tonight.
Correct. But 5 million of that is going to detention that's within the boundaries of TERS 1, but it's not TERS 1 funds. The 5 million is going to the detention pond that's going to be oversized to allow us to do the shelving along the creek.
And so my, my question there is, we're, we are expending to enlarge a drainage pond within the boundaries of a TERS that we insured the people, that we would not be using funded dollars from our, our bond election.
So councils approved a contract back. It's a, a bit skewed, and that's not, no.
Okay. I don't, I, I don't want to break trust with what little there is of it out there now. I don't want to break trust with the people and say, oh, well, now all of a sudden, we're using general obligation fund dollars for TERS expenses.
Well, I'll, I'll say, and this is not directed to anybody on this dais, but the, the mischaracterization of trust is not anything that the city's doing, it's the comments that are being made on social media that are completely off.
Regardless of that, I'm just saying what I have told people.
So again.
I don't want to, to take, I don't want to be in conflict with what I have told people.
I understand. So in order for us to do any shelving along Clear Creek, we have to have detention. So that's why we're doing the 1959 drainage detention project at FM 1959 in Clear Creek. We also had to have detention downstream on the Whitcomb property, the Forest Bend property, in order to achieve the necessary conveyance credits to do shelving of, of Clear Creek. It would be far more costly for us to go dig our own pond than it would be to expand a pond that the developer's already digging for their own project. So we put 5 million dollars towards that detention pond that they're already digging so it can be oversized in order to get conveyance credits along Clear Creek.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that for me because I'm, I just really got a kick-up on that.
Yes, sir. And I encourage anybody that's got questions to engage myself, to engage our engineering department. All of this is documented, all of this is within the hydrologic and hydraulic plan that was approved by the Harris County Flood Control District. So this wasn't just the City of Friendswood, this is other agencies reviewing these very same things.
Okay. Well, I just would really. Well, I just would really like when it comes to especially TERS one and TERS two, is we have advise and consent as, uh, the council members. And I just don't feel like we've had any say-so in what's been going on, uh, with either the TERS one or Tor- or TERS two. And, and in my thinking, the, the city of Friendswood Economic Development Department ha- has no jurisdiction in TERS one and TERS two. Planning and zoning has no jurisdiction in TERS one and TERS two. Only those of us who have advise and consent in the power of the purse should be helping with some of the decisions that are being made in those. And, and we're, and we have, I think the cart's out before the horse and, and, and we haven't really seen anything. I feel like I've been in the dark in regards to it. And then, and that's why I was asking mainly about some of these dollars, because I saw it in an implementation document that came through and then it was taken down. I, I would like for those implementation documents to stay up so that I can make suggestions to them.
So what you're referring to is the, the, the PID Service and Assessment Plan that's not complete, and it's referring to the public improvements that are being done within the Public Improvement District in the TERS boundaries.
Exactly.
Uh, but the dollars associated with the detention were approved by this council back in January of this year. So this wasn't done in the vacuum at staff level, this was done, uh, within this public meeting in the open forum by the city council.
I agree with that. But what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is, is I would like those documents to stay up because we're gonna be, uh, voting on possible project infrastructure debt, yet we don't, we will, we're just here for the consent of it and, and not advice. And I just feel like I'm, I'm in the dark about what's going on in some of this.
Well, we want to make sure you have the exact, correct documents. So once they're finalized, we will present it to this body to have multiple weeks to review it. So I didn't want you to have something that was incomplete.
Yeah.
Because if you have incomplete data, then you're, you're making decisions based off of incomplete and invalid information.
Well, but again, I would like to see some slowdown on people doing things out in the field that, that we haven't said that they could do. I mean, it seems to me like we're going off of a, um, conceptual plat without any drainage, without a preliminary plat, without any dedication. I haven't seen any preliminary plat.
So the, the city council doesn't review plats, our planning and zoning commission has reviewed.
Well, I want to now because I'm, I'm in the TERS.
So.
I, I want that authority to be in the TERS. The TERS itself is a different animal. It is its own TERS fund, and we have advise and consent in a tax increment revenue zone. So I should be able to see that. I, I think, I, I think I have more jurisdiction than planning and zoning who are unelected and who are members of which have been only appointed as, as members of unelected body. Yet I don't get to see a preliminary plat? Has there been any drainage done?
There, all of those plans have been reviewed and approved by the various entities that are required to review and approve. So the planning and zoning committee reviewed and approved the preliminary plat.
The, the conceptual plat.
Not the conceptual, the preliminary plat itself. They've reviewed and approved final plat.
I would love to see the preliminary plat.
You're welcome to come by and take a look at it whenever you would like. The Harris County Flood Control District approved the H and H Drainage Study associated with a detention pond. Our engineering department signed off on the drainage plans associated with the project. So none of this stuff has.
Why don't we even, why don't we ever get into that?
Because none of those items come to city council for a review and approval on any project.
Well, I'm asking for them now. I'm asking for that.
So we can't, we can't deviate from what's in our code of ordinances and bring them to you guys, but you're welcome to come look at them whenever you would like and, and review them, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on, item six B, consider setting a public hearing regarding the city of Friendswood fiscal twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five municipal budget for August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four at five-thirty PM in council chamber, city hall, nine-ten South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, seven-seven-five-four-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Show unanimous. Six C, receive the twenty-twenty-four appraisal rolls by the Gaucon Central Appraisal District and the Harris County Appraisal District, anticipated collection rate and the excess debt collections certified by the city's tax collector and the no-new revenue and voter-approved tax rates.
Second.
We don't, we don't need a motion or, uh, vote on this one. This is just to receive the.
Correct.
Appraisal rolls, so, uh, Rhonda, if you, can you tell us that you've got them and so we can receive them?
Yes, and they were attached to the agenda item.
Those certified estimates were.
Oh, the certified.
Yes.
Yes, the certified estimates, and we've only received, uh, the certified values from, uh, Gaucon Central Appraisal District. We usually don't get, um, Harris County until the end of August.
We have to comply with our rules and have our work done, but they don't. Okay, I get it. It's all right. It's a big county, I, I understand, that's a big, big, big.
They're a larger county.
They are a large. All right. Well, I'll make the statement, the appraisal rolls have been received. Moving on to item sixty, consider approving the proposed ad valorem tax rate for twenty-twenty-four.
And I have script. Okay. I move that the city of Friendswood propose a tax rate of fifty-one point four-one-seven-two cents per one-hundred valuation. This rate is effectively a three-point-eight percent increase in the tax rate above the no-new revenue rate of forty-nine point five-one-one cents. The proposed rate is one-point-three cents more than the city's current tax rate of fifty-point-oh-seven-two-eight cents.
Second.
Can I have a motion and a second? Any further questions, discussion?
I guess I have, I want to clarify one thing. We vote on this night, but we will vote on this again.
Correct.
This is, right. I'm just double checking for everybody here.
We have to publicize the tax rate that we are going to vote on. So we want to make sure everybody's, uh, agreeable to, to this tax rate so we can publish it. Any other questions? All in favor? Posed, six to one. Item sixty, consider setting the public hearing regarding the ad valorem tax rate for twenty-twenty-four on September ninth, twenty-twenty-four at six PM in council chamber, city hall, nine-ten South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, seven-seven-five-four-six.
Mayor, I move to schedule a public hearing on the proposed tax rate on September ninth, twenty-twenty-four at six PM in the council chambers of city hall to afford proponents and opponents of the proposed tax increase to present their views.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Posed, six to one. Okay, uh, moving on to item seven, zone classification change at six-fifty and eight-hundred North Friendswood Drive. It is six-twenty-eight PM. I now call to order this public hearing regarding a zone classification change for property located at six-fifty and eight-hundred North Friendswood Drive, being approximately thirteen-point-six-four-nine-one acres of land consisting of restricted reserves B-two and B-three in the replat of Reserve B, Analia, Kings Park, Section B, and White Hall, Section B, as recorded in the Gaucon County map records, document number two-oh-two-one-oh-three-five-nine-four-five, and being approximately seven-point-seven-five-four acres of land out of the Perry and Austin survey, abstract twenty, page four, Gaucon County, Friendswood, Texas, to change from community shopping center to planned unit development to allow a mixed-use development consisting of commercial and age-restricted multifamily living and an amendment to the future land use map to change approximately eleven-point-six-four-two acres of land located within such thirteen-point-six-four-nine-one acres described here and above from retail to high-density residential.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Let me, let me read a little bit more.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I was just taking a breath. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views on proposed zone classification change and amendment to the future land use map. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have completed public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary. At the podium, each participant shall give his/her name and address in order to provide a proper record of this hearing. The rules allow each person five minutes to present information, however, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I'd now like to request the staff summarize the subject of this public hearing. Aubrey Harbin.
Good evening. Uh, so this is a zone change request and a future land use map amendment. Um, the, uh, our future land use map does identify the entirety of this property being developed as retail. Um, the property's been available and marketed as retail for forty years, I think, um, and no viable developments have come forward at this time. So, um, the develop, uh, partnership that's taking place is proposing to do some more senior, uh, living, um, similar to what's already in this corridor. Uh, so the Belmont is the proposed project. Um, it will be a senior living, uh, age-restricted to fifty-five years and older, a complex consisting of two-hundred-and-thirty-two units with attached and detached garages and offering amenities such as swimming pools, uh, dog park, and possibly storage for the residents. Um, it would include a hundred-and-six one-bedroom units and a hundred-and-twenty-six two-bedroom units. Um, approximately two-point-six-two-seven acres would be reserved for commercial development along the frontage of, uh, five-eighteen. Uh, ample parking spaces would be provided for residents and future commercial development. And, uh, additionally, the developer is planning to conduct a traffic impact analysis and anticipates the installation of a fully signalized intersection at, uh, Chelsea and, uh, North Friendswood Drive. Um, I'll go to the next screen. Um, this development di- is a little bit different, um, than the Beldon and the Bedford, which are already existing in that this will include some three-story, uh, structures. Uh, the developers are here tonight so they can give you a little more details about the project. Um, so we'll jump over to the site plan. Um, we did have a few people attend the public hearing, uh, the planning and zoning held on July eleventh. Um, there were concerns about, uh, drainage, um, impact to their utilities that serve their properties, um, the addition of fire hydrants, increased crime, devalued property, um, impact to wildlife, and increased traffic, and specifically on Riverside Drive. Um, so I know there's also been some concern about the Pearland side, so on the map, um, there is, I don't know which one's the pointer. Oh, there we go. Uh, this red line right here is the city and county limit line. So we're not approving anything over here. Um, the developer is planning to coordinate with the city of Pearland to see what they'll allow over there, but our approvals are specifically for what's inside our city limits. Um, and then additionally, this is the intersection that would possibly be a fully, um, signalized traffic intersection, um, that would benefit, um, a lot of, I actually had a resident from, uh, Analia come in last week asking for a traffic signal at Brandywine and five-eighteen. So, um, it's still, uh, a need there, so, um, the drainage obviously would be accounted for with the development. The developer is proposing to put, um, the drainage and walking trails along the back of the property as a buffer to the existing residences. Um, so drainage will be accounted for, um, utilities, they'll be, be required to extend water and sewer and fire hydrants, uh, the buildings will all be sprinkled, um, so everything would be served. Um, and, uh, the, I mean, they'll account for their detention. There's also a thirty-foot drainage easement along the back of those properties, um, from when that property was developed, uh, forty years ago, that they'll have to plan for accounting for thirty feet of that drainage as well. Um, there was some hesitation maybe in amending the future land use map, however, this property has been vacant for a lot of years. Um, the commission felt that, um, providing the alternate types of, or, uh, aging population providing housing for them, that that meets one of our criteria for a planning and development. And then also, um, it serves as a transition between different and seemingly incompatible land uses by providing multifamily housing between the commercial development and the single-family residential. Uh, so the commission held their, uh, public hearing on July eleventh and is forwarding a positive recommendation. I think we had two commissioners ab- absent that night, but it was a unanimous vote. That's all I have.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, uh, some speakers, uh, Julie Bush.
Hi, my name's Julie Bush. I live at eight-thirteen Camelot Lane, which would back up the proposed property on, behind the bigger of the retention ponds. Um, my questions would be, I understand that they're putting a retention pond and it's gonna have a little bridge and be real pretty and all that kind of stuff, but how are they going to protect us during the building of this property? Because the field is already two feet higher than my backyard. If I go out into the backyard, or out, out into the field and stand on the field, there's a distinct drop-off which allows water to come. Now granted, any drainage improvement is obviously a plus in my favor, but in the building, how are they going to protect me while they've got their piles of dirt and their construction and their everything going on to protect me from getting runoff and flood from that? Uh, the other question is, is yes, obviously, we've needed a light at Camelot and, and, excuse me, Chelsea and five-eighteen desperately for many years because the school buses have to cross there, and we're now going to add, I mean, most people at fifty-five are still working, so they're going to be leaving the property, exiting on Chelsea Lane to exit. So it's like, I understand they're going to, uh, put forth a, you know, try to get a light, but what happens if they can't get a light? So we're gonna back traffic up even more and cause more issues. I know that Pearland, I watched the video on the meeting because I couldn't attend on the eleventh, and that was Riverside Drive's major concern was that they can't get out of their property, and they only have one way in and out. We have more than one way in or out, but it's, none of them are good. Um, with being a fifty-five and older, I'm not so much worried about crime, but like I said, the, the drainage issues, the current drainage system along Chelsea Lane isn't adequate for us, much less, you know, a hundred-and-twenty-two more units. Are they going to update all that drainage in there? Um, you know, bring it up to current code, uh, and things like that? That's my major concerns. Uh, you know, I mean, yes, if the field has been empty for years. Yes, we do have wildlife there, and bit Friendswood being a, a bird sanctuary, I don't know how that impacts it, but, you know, that's for y'all to figure out. But like I, oh, my other question is, is I know that at the end of my street, you jumped the fence, you're in Pearland, and so that's where they plan on putting, or at least they said in the other meeting, the storage buildings for the community and the dog park. Well, are any changes going to be made to the portion on the Friendswood side if Pearland doesn't give them permission to build that over there? Say y'all, say y'all approve the rezoning and the building of it, but say Pearland doesn't, does that change, are they not gonna be allowed to exit on Riverside Drive then? And are they going to move that storage in that dog park further onto our side, or are they just gonna do without it? So those are my questions.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. David Walker.
Hi, uh, my name's David Walker. I'm at six-oh-nine Huntington Lane. Uh, my house is going to back up to the smaller section on the left, and, um, well, besides traffic, uh, some of my concerns are with the flood retention. Will that be circulating water or not? Cause if you look at the, uh, gas station that's being built on the corner there, they put a flood retention pond out, and that thing's been holding stagnant water for months. It does not drain, it does not evaporate. So there, my concern would be a, uh, like a mosquito issue and things like that. Um, one of my other concerns is they're talking about three-story buildings. So is there a privacy issue with having three-story buildings, you know, right outside, you know, or close to my back fence for, you know, me and my family in my backyard? Other than that, uh, the traffic light would be great, because a- it, as of right now, it's sometimes, especially in morning and evening, it's really hard getting out of the neighborhood. But, uh, those are pretty much my, uh, major concerns with this thing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Cheryl, can't quite make out your last name, I apologize.
It's Weaver, and my handwriting is horrible, I'm very.
Oh, Weaver, right? Uh, no, I see it now, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Cheryl Weaver, thirty-seven-oh-three Riverside Drive, Pearland. Our main concern is your Section B on the Pearland-Friendswood border. If you'll look at the map, you've got a road. If you'll look at the map, you've got a road that goes and dumps onto Riverside in the front of the development and in the back. There is only one way in and out of Riverwalk on Riverside Drive. And right now, we have a hundred and twenty-three houses in our neighborhood and two hundred and fifty cars. And you're talking about adding two hundred and thirty-two units, so approximately five hundred more vehicles. Now if y'all get a light at Chelsea right there, that would be great. But you're gonna have such a backup of traffic on Riverside. And there's already the light that's at Sunset right before it, right before Christie Buck's office on that corner. I don't know if that light, I guess that's a Pearland thing, but I don't know if they would consider moving that light. I don't see them putting in another light at Riverside, but I don't think it's feasible to have that many people, you know, backed up on Riverside trying to get in and out in the morning and the afternoons. During Hurricane Burl, our retention pond was completely full. So it goes into Mary's Creek. But every time it fills up to the brim, and if you've got all of this new development behind it, my home has never flooded since two thousand and two or before. I don't know if that's even reality coming forward because if you're building on the backside, and like the other lady said, the water running downhill, it's going to affect the backyards of all of our houses on Riverside. I don't know how to alleviate that. Has a drainage impact report, I guess, been completed? And a traffic report, you know, you're talking about adding all of these vehicles to come out on Riverside. I don't know where you're gonna put them all. I guess that's all I have. Anyway, I, I think it'll be nice to have part of it. I don't think it's great to, you know, I'm just very concerned about our houses, the flooding potential with the runoff, and the enormous amount of vehicles for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Goff.
My name's Kim Goff. I live at eight eleven Camelot Lane here in Friendswood. I'm Julie's neighbor, so my property backs up the Section B, which is the big section over here. My concern was, I went to the planning meeting, which I was kind of surprised it was held because most of the people in Friendswood at the time were trying to recover from Hurricane Burl. But it went on. At that meeting, the developer stood up front and he goes, "We plan on doing this, we plan on doing that, we plan on meeting with the Galveston Drainage Commission, we plan on doing this." All he said was, "Plan, plan, plan." "We plan on paying for the light that they're talking about putting in on Chelsea Lane." My question is this, okay, you pay for the light, who's gonna maintain that light? Are you gonna make the city responsible? And is that really truly fair to the city of Friendswood? My other concern is what they call on here detention lake and the detention ditch, which the other individual talked to, which is next to the dog walk. To me, that's nothing more than an open sewer, because let's be for real, dogs don't care where they poop. There's nothing then saying that who's gonna be responsible for the mosquito control? How are you gonna control the mosquitoes? And then we get to the traffic problem. Chelsea Lane is a very busy road, everybody knows that. It's used not only by the community, but it's also used by the schools that takes people, students, to and from school. You have two entrances, both of them on five eighteen. During Hurricane Harvey, five eighteen was a drainage ditch that ran, took the water and drained it to areas where it could be siphoned off someplace else. What are they gonna do to try and control that? I mean, if you've got two entrances where there were none, that's like opening up a door, spigot, letting rainwater and floodwater run down through your, not only your development, but also into the backyard of the houses. So that's another one of my concerns. Not to mention, as if somebody mentioned, a three-story house. Am I gonna have somebody looking in my backyard? If so, what can I do, other than nothing? The other thing is, this area is a fairly old development. Will the infrastructure in regards to water, sewer, the gas lines, the electric lines be able to support this? And are they even gonna be able to support the construction when it goes on? And how much is my life gonna be disturbed when they're in there with big old heavy equipment, digging and everything else in regards to putting these buildings up? It looks good, it sounds good, but in reality, is it really good? And is it really good for the city of Friendswood? After all, I mean, my house never flooded. Now I'm looking at possibility, my house is gonna flood. My property value's gonna go down possibly because this is going in. Nobody's ever mentioned any of this stuff. All I've heard is, "We plan, we plan, we plan," but nobody has come forward, even to you, members of the city council, with something in writing, said, "This is what we got approval for. This is how we're gonna put it in, and this is when we're gonna put it in." And I just, I just think some, some of this, they're gonna turn over to the city. Does the city have enough high-water rescue vehicles to go in here and rescue people off if it start flooding? Does the fire department have enough fire equipment adequately to fight a fire in one of these apartments? Those are my concerns, not only for myself, my family, but also for the people that are gonna be living there. And I thank you for your time in this matter.
Thank you, sir. There being no one else desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing and move on to Item seven B. Consider an ordinance regarding a zone classification change for property located at six fifty and eight hundred North Friendswood Drive, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, from Community Shopping Center, CST, to Planned Unit Development, PUD, to allow mixed-use development consisting of commercial and age-restricted multifamily living, and an amendment to the future land use map to change approximately eleven point six four two acres of land located within such thirteen point six four nine one acres described here and above, from retail to high-density residential.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, I, I did have one question, Aubrey. Aubrey, could you go through the process? I know we're voting tonight on just a zone change, but could you just quickly lay out what the process is and what approvals are required after tonight?
Yes, so this is the first step in the process because the zoning that's existing doesn't allow this type of development. So this is the zone change request to say that this development is allowed. At that time, if it's approved, the developer would move forward with engineering, drainage and utilities and all that. So the preliminary and final plats will come to the Planning and Zoning Commission to formally plat the property. And then they would submit drainage utility plans. We've already had conversations with Fire Marshal about fire access around the buildings. They will have to add fire hydrants throughout the property. They'll have to extend water and sewer lines to serve the property and then meet current drainage requirements. So all that will be reviewed by Fire Marshal, engineering, public works, planning, building, all the departments review that as part of the development process. It will come back to Planning and Zoning Commission for site plan approval. It will go to the Drainage District for their preliminary plat, their final plat, and their drainage plans will all go to the Drainage District. So there's a lot of work still to be done. This is just the first step in the process.
I heard almost every one of the questions answered there except for one on the buffer and height and the distance from a back neighborhood or whatever. I've slept since I've read it. What is that buffer, that, that height limitation and that sort of thing?
So currently, the, the property is zone CSC right now. So it allows up to forty feet. So with this-
Oh, so this will be forty feet?
Currently zoned would allow forty feet.
Will allow forty feet, okay.
Yes, and they are going with multifamily median, so, multifamily high. But it's still forty. Yeah, it'll still be less than forty.
So they could, they could have built it with even, without the pud?
Yeah, yes. And the three stories, they are keeping up closer to five eighteen.
Oh, on, on the front?
Correct.
And then the back is lower? Okay, all right.
They're, they're putting their detention pond in any of the buffer areas in the back so to keep the distance as much as possible from the residential that exists. The other question that wasn't answered yet is, the traffic signal, if it's installed, will be maintained by the Texas Department of Transportation? So the developer would pay for it, thank you, developer. But then it would be turned over to the Texas DOT to maintain.
And I'd just like to reiterate, the portion that falls into Pearland is not part of our decision-making process here. That's gonna go through the Pearland cycle, probably very similar to our Friendswood cycle. But we have no say-so over that. So if it's beyond that line, for those who live in Pearland that are here tonight, this does not apply to their property.
Yeah, Brett did indicate earlier that they may need it for detention. So it may, if Pearland doesn't allow it, then those amenities would just be removed. But if they need it for additional detention, it may just be additional detention.
And this meets all the pud requirements? If we check those boxes for pud?
Yeah, it just has to meet one. Yeah, it meets two.
Two, okay.
Yeah.
But if they wanted to build a shopping center right here, we wouldn't even be discussing this because currently it's zoned that way.
Yes, yes. And CSC requires an eight-foot fence, a fifteen-foot landscape buffer with a tree every twenty-five feet. It's the requirement.
CSC.
The community shopping center is what it's zoned now.
Right.
And it's adjacent to residential. So that would be the buffer requirement as a minimum, would be the fence.
And this would have a little bit more? This is more?
Yes.
Aubrey, oh, sorry, Mike.
Well, that's all right, I'll take my turn when you're done. That's all right, sir.
Thank, thank you, very kind. One follow-up question, do you happen to know what the distance would be from the home, current homeowner's back fence to the three-story buildings that are being proposed? I mean, roughly, do you? I know that's a detail, but I was just trying to get a feeling for how far away those three-
That's kind of what I was wondering too.
But we do have ordinances that, that limit how close you can be to looking into somebody's backyard.
Right.
To prevent that.
So on this side over here, it's about forty feet on section, oh, sorry, I can't-
The short side.
Uh, over here, so forty feet.
Do you know the other side?
That's more than that.
Yeah, that's-
Okay. Thank you, thank you, that, that just gives me a flavor.
I just want to say that I did, for those of you from Pearland, I did talk to Mayor Cole today. He called me about this. He wanted to point out some things that, that we, of course, already know that some of this development is across the line in Pearland. And he pointed out, as you probably already know, Brett, that storage is not allowed in NS. Is that what that zoning is in Pearland? I don't think we have NS.
We don't.
But anyway, their zoning doesn't allow, currently allow, so I told him, "Well, I, I knew that you were planning, having talked to you to go talk to Pearland Community Development." So I just want to let people know from Pearland that your mayor is speaking out and representing you. Good job. All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor. Okay. City Manager's Report, Item eight.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item I have is Movies in the Park. They have already started. Due to Hurricane Burl, the first movie was scratched, but the others have since taken place. Throughout the month of July and August, there will be a movie every night at dusk at Stevenson Park, not Centennial Park this time. We have seen an uptick in attendance because Stevenson Park is far more visible in the community. And we are fairly optimistic that that trend continues. The last movie will be a dive-in movie. Christmas will come early, so will be The Grinch. If you want to swim and watch a Christmas movie in August, by all means, come to Stevenson Park Pool. The second item is a piano recital that recently took place at the Friendswood Public Library. It was an evening of entertainment by kids, young and old, that performed for patrons at the library. The kid on the far right is an accurate depiction. It was a three-year-old that stunned the, the audience. I gave Matt a hard time at staff meeting, he needs a video of that next time. But we seem to have a young prodigy in our midst in Friendswood, and we're excited about that. As everyone knows, Hurricane Burl hit us earlier in July. We've had quite a bit of impacts as a result of the hurricane. Mayor Protem Matranga referenced some of it during his comments this evening. To date, we have collected seventy-six thousand cubic yards of debris, vegetative debris. That's tree limbs and branches and stuff that have fallen off of trees as a result of the hurricane. The fencing material and the clear-bagged debris has not been picked up yet. It will be picked up later in the past, namely because federal requirements stipulate that different material go to different sections of the landfill. So you can't mulch bagged debris, you can't mulch fencing material due to the chemical makeup of the, the equipment. One of the biggest items of note throughout the hurricane is getting information out to the public. And we've noticed that there's quite a few in the community that aren't signed up to receive messages. So I provided the QR code on the screen before you, but you're welcome to visit our website to get some more information. I encourage each and everybody, both here and in, at home watching this on TV, to, to sign up to receive emergency alerts, both by phone as well as email alerts and text alerts. I encourage you to go to our social media platforms on Facebook, Instagram, and others, and favorite our pages because the way the Facebook algorithms work, if you don't like a material on our page on a frequent enough basis, you will not see it in your news feed. So we may be posting, but you'll never see that information. So I encourage everybody to go out there. The map in the middle of the screen is, is a picture back in time as to what's been, what's transposed. If you notice, all those green dots and blue dots on the screen represent debris that's been picked up throughout the community, and it hasn't been in any particular area. It's been widespread throughout the entire city. My street has not been serviced, and I likely will be the very last person to have my debris picked up. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that there's no favoritism associated with the debris removal process. Next slide, please. We've heard comments, as we've gotten a lot of passionate calls at both City Hall and in Emergency Operations Center related to that this is the worst debris response since any prior storm. Well, obviously, it's human nature sometimes when we look back or think back about prior storms, they don't seem to be as, as bad or as we, we recollect. We're more, we're naturally wired to be more focused on the present. The screen before you shows you the debris volumes and timelines associated with the prior storms in this current one. This first slide is a timeline overview. So on storm operations, in operations period and storm to completion, the far-right graph shows you that it took us, for instance, for Hurricane Harvey, a hundred and forty-two days to complete debris pickup. Based upon the pace we're maintaining right now, we're anticipating sixty-seven days for pickup for Hurricane Burl. Though Hurricane Burl was a Cat One storm, we hit the dirty, not the, we hit the, the optimal and not the right-way side of the storm that caused quite a bit of wind gusts in Friendswood that knocked down a number of trees. Next slide, please. As far as cubic yards of debris, Hurricane Ike, another windstorm back in two thousand and nine, generated roughly half a million cubic yards of debris. Sidebar comment, it took us over five years to get all of our reimbursements from the federal government-related debris pickup. We spent over, I want to say eight million dollars in emergency response and debris pickup for that storm. We're estimating about three million dollars for, for Hurricane Burl. It's painstakingly slow. We have seven trucks working throughout the city of Friendswood. That's more trucks than we had working during Harvey. I know that's a surprise to some. There were instances during Harvey where we only had one truck. You may recall Sylvester Turner changing the, the going rate for debris pickup due to the impact of the city Houston. Well, by federal law, we can't negotiate new prices post-storm. Otherwise, we negate reimbursement. And as you saw in our budget, we don't have three million dollars to piss away. Sorry for my language. We anticipate roughly a hundred thousand cubic yards for Burl. Again, to date, we've collected seventy-six thousand cubic yards, so the first pass is nearly complete. You will get a slight break after first pass is complete so that if anybody's got anything that they have yet to clean up in their backyards and front yards and want to take it out of the curb, they have an opportunity to do so, so we can still pick it up. Next slide. We did get an email this last week that, it wasn't comic relief, but I wanted to share with Council, this is synonymous with some of the complaints we're receiving. A resident was upset due to the, the, the nature of the pickup that left their street dirty. The image on the left is a, is a close-up image of what they sent us as far as how rude and inefficient our contract- uh, rude and inefficient our contractors were when they picked up the debris and the mess they left. If you zoom out, they provided both pictures the resident did. That is the totality of the, the mess that was left in the street and the dead grass associated with it. I understand this is an inconvenience for everybody. Um, we do not have the resources to go back and have the debris contractor stop and clean up, uh, things such as that. Uh, again, I, I appreciate everyone's frustration, and until the last bit of debris's picked up, there's always gonna be frustration, but I encourage everyone to be patient as this process is, is completed. Next slide, please. Um, recently, members of city staff and city council attended a ribbon-cutting for the connection of Lake City Parkway to Friendswood Parkway. Uh, this was a longstanding project that's been in the works with Lake City for a number of years. Uh, this last section, the small section, being, uh, completed by Hillwood Community in the Legacy Development as part of an extension of the roadway that was previously done through a tax increment reinvestment zone within the city of Lake City, as well as done as part of a mud project in, within Lake City. Uh, it was mentioned previously what, uh, funding mechanisms are out there, or why don't we let developers pay their full freight? As you can see as well in Lake City and, as well as here in Friendswood, certain sections require, uh, some investment in order to get the projects over the hump. Next slide, please. Uh, we wanna recognize our Assistant City Manager, Katina Hampton. She recently got accepted to the Texas Women's Leadership Institute Program. This is a year-long, uh, program that, uh, she will be working with nineteen other, uh, professional females throughout the state of Texas, working on furthering their education and, uh, city management activities. Uh, this is a similar program to what, uh, Assistant City Manager Letty Brish is currently in. We applaud both of them for their continuous efforts to, to improving our organization.
Yes.
Lastly, I'd like to recognize our Emergency Medical Services and Chief Lisa Camp. Uh, they, for the eighth year in a row, received the, uh, twenty-twenty-four American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Gold Achievement Award. Uh, this is for the level of care that they provide in their emergency services response. Um, much like our finance department, when they stop getting these rewards is when I start getting concerned. But, uh, thank you to you and your team for all that they do. And I believe that is it for my City Manager's Report unless y'all have any questions.
Great job. All right, item nine, recess. The city council meeting will now recess the August fifth city council meeting and call to order the Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust regular meeting. We're almost done. We're almost done. And, uh, before we go on, Shayna Miller is here, our rep from Higginbotham. And I wanted to recognize her because she was just recently named one of the forty-under-forty in Galveston County, so. She's right back there, right in front of Matt. Great job. A Friendswood resident and, uh, very proud of that. Marad, I guess you're too old to compete in the forty-under-forty now. A previous, uh, recon- recognizee. Well, okay, I had to point that out. Let's see, uh, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items two A and two B.
Move to approve?
Got a motion and a second. And let me read these because I think that's better if I- Two A is consider approving the minutes of the Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust meeting held on August seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Item two B is consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into agreements for employee medical, dental, and pharmacy insurance, employee life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, employee vision insurance, employee long-term disability insurance, and ancillary products for employees. So I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Yes.
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 Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. With no further business, we now adjourn the Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust regular meeting. Now gonna, I go to item ten, I now reconvene the city council regular meeting and move on to item eleven A. Consider authorizing the monthly transfer of funds to the City of Friendswood Employee Benefit Trust contingent upon sufficient appropriations in the fiscal twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five City of Friendswood budget.
Motion to approve?
Motion and a second. Any questions? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Item twelve, ordinances and resolutions. Consider on second and final reading an ordinance amending chapter seventy, streets, sidewalks, and other public places. Article three, construction, sections seventy dash seventy-seven, restricted use seventy dash seventy-nine, maximum plant height seventy dash eighty, minimum branch height above street gutter flow lines, and seventy-eighty-one extending into street of the Friendswood City Code to revise the permitted height of plants, trees, and branches in and over restricted areas, including visibility triangles and other traveled public ways.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh, yeah, let me just ask, just one real quick question, um, Texas-
Apologize, because we were second.
I apologize. Um, Texas to New Mexico Power has been trimming the trees along various, well, uh, high lines and everything. And in various places, it's just really upset a lot of homeowners. Um, you can drive up and down Spreading Oaks by my house over there as you go towards McDonald's and five eighteen. And what they did was really bad. I support raising up the tree line so our trucks and everything can get through there. I'm absolutely for it. But I just wanna say that what they did, um, along the lines, uh, on Spreading Oaks and what they may do to the oaks, uh, I mean, um, Shadow Bend, I'm sorry, on Shadow Bend, but what, what they may do to the oaks on Spreading Oaks, I think we should all, uh, be aware that that could look the same way on Spreading Oaks as it does on Shadow Bend.
So I actually took a call from a resident and spoke to them about this.
I did too.
Um, so the residents along Spreading Oak in particular wanted a chance to trim their own trees. And to the best of my knowledge, the ones who reached out to us have been able to accomplish that because you're right, it, it's not attractive. But I also was told that there is such a thing as an arborist with Texas to Mexico Power if time were to allow. I think their, um, what am I trying to say? Their motivation right now is that folks were so upset about being without their power, and one of the culprits were the trees that are in the wires. And so that is why they're trying to remedy the situation as quickly as they can. And it's a whole lot faster to, to take the middle out of the tree than it is to trim it up, you know, like an arborist would. So we're kind of a victim of our circumstances this summer with the hurricane season being, as Brian told, it's probably one of the worst that we will see for a while, unfortunately, and I'm, I'm sorry about that. So I'm with you.
Yes.
Uh, it makes me ill to see our trees butchered like that, but I understand why they're doing what they're doing. It's unfortunate.
We're a little bit off of our agenda here, so let, let me steer us back. I have a motion and a second on item twelve A. All in favor?
It was just too trimming and it kinda got-
It's Roberts.
Item twelve B, consider an ordinance temporarily waiving various building permit fees for structures damaged by Hurricane Barrel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Twelve C, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four by approving budget amendment nine and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, uh, unanimous. Twelve D, consider a resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant mitigation, CDBG-dash-mit. Application for the Resilient Communities Program through the Texas General Land Office to fund the development and adoption of a forward-looking comprehensive plan that integrates hazard mitigation, planning, and minimizes the impact of future disasters.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Aubrey, do you wanna point at, I think some residents might appreciate what, what this is gonna hopefully do.
Uh, yes, um, so we're working with a consultant to apply for a grant from the GLO. Um, the total grant with the management costs and everything would be about three hundred thousand dollars. Um, they would review the hazard mitigation plans for Galveston and Harris County that we're a part of and give us a good overhaul, a comprehensive overhaul of our comprehensive plan. Um, uh, I think we have two years to complete the project if we're awarded the grant.
An arche cost share?
Nothing.
Zero.
Yeah. Uh, it's not a matching grant, it's just a, an award.
I appreciate y'all pursuing this. I think it's great.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? All right, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.